Those are almost competitive.
Testing, okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Officially seven will call the order. Join me if you don't mind with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Kay.
Present.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Walker.
Here.
Mayor Eagan.
Here.
So we'll start with a, in the presentations here, we have a proclamation from Escondue City Council to recognize the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So it's here. I don't know if you guys want to say anything or not before I go to consent calendar.
Yeah, so I would just like to personally thank the council members and the city recognizing October 25 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer has affected my family and my wife's family. I know it's affected many of our residents and early detection is the key and just really want to thank the council and the community and really promote breast cancer awareness, not only in October, but every month because it affects every family and so, and especially to those that wore pink tonight, thanks for your support.
We'll go on to consent calendar unless anyone else would like to say something? No? Okay. Consent calendar, one through five, do, does anyone want to pull anything?
I don't want to pull anything, but Mr. Mayor, I'd like to abstain from consent calendar item number one.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All pro opposed, say nay. Okay.
I guess.
Supposed.
So.
The beep was supposed.
So go on to staff.
Can I ask one question on consent here that we just awarded the Main Street Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project? Do we have more of a date of when that's going to start now that it's been awarded?
Yeah, we have a roundabout date with approval this evening. We actually have a construction, a pre-construction meeting set for tomorrow.
Okay.
To finalize those dates, but it will be after Christmas on Main and before any other events do start the following year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
One request. I don't know with that, when our, when the tree lighting ceremony is, if that's before or after, but let's just make sure we're.
Yep, that is considered in the, in the planning.
Thank you.
Problem. And we do have a date for that and we can get that guy, so we finalized that last week.
Okay. So you mean Andrew, where do you want to start the staff communications tonight?
Same place.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, councilmembers. We have a couple of reports tonight. We have a treasurer's report that will give us the cash balances for all of our different funds. We have recently made this into a two-page report, so it's a little bit easier to read and added a few subtotals in there for general fund and the water departments and things like that, general enterprise. We had a few questions from a few of the residents about, you know, different balances, so we've added those to meet those requests. We also have a quarterly report that's quite large. It will detail the revenues, expenses, budgets, and cash balances for all the different funds that we have, and it has a few summaries in there. So if anyone has any questions, I can start with a question.
I don't have any questions, is anyone else?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
How are we tracking for mid-year?
Mid-year is going to be another three months away. We're doing well. We're at the first quarter, so we should be at about 25% of our expected rent revenues or our expenditures. In a perfect world, it would be right at 25. So in the first quarter, we see a little, little flux there, but we are doing good. One of our first summaries shows us that we're at about 17% of our revenues and we've got 75% of our budget left. We're doing good, we're right on, on target there.
Anything else? Okay.
I don't have any questions, I just appreciate the detail because it does help to see what exactly things are spent on and.
There's a lot of detail, this is one of the quarterly, so, you know, we may look at cutting this down a little bit, but for right now, I think maybe the first and the third quarters, we could do this full, so everybody can, not, not a heck of a lot to see that first quarter, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, it's a very nice start.
Thank you so much.
We'll keep up.
That's all I have, really, for this portion.
Keep up the good work, we'll go on to chief then, if there's no other questions. Okay.
There was an uptick in deaths last month, five of those were burglaries at the storage facility. We did end up apprehending the suspects, got a call, officers responded, they, vehicle was gone when they arrived, but they found the vehicle over at Dollar General. Officer Harrison investigated it and was able to tie him to two burglaries. We suspect that they were the same ones in all five. I also want to give a special shout out to all the officers. They did a great job this month as far as they were kind of, there was a couple of weeks where they were really slammed. Officer Ryman really stepped up, she worked like 10 days straight. She was called in early to help with the investigation of the burglary as well as a couple of other cases that needed some special help, and she stepped up and I want to make sure that she's recognized.
Sounds like your team's doing good work.
They are, they are.
Any questions for chief?
Is Zambrana attracting dead Fords today?
Uh, it was a.
The one-on-one 20, now he's got one dead in Marvell's parking lot.
Uh, that was a TC.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, off to public works.
Public works does not have anything this evening, unless you have any questions.
I do not currently. Any questions up here? Okay, we'll go to matters, actually, sorry, take it back to the city manager.
You were right, no further reports over here either.
We'll take it to matters presented from the audience then, if there's no one in the audience that would like to speak to the staff communications part. So we'll open it up for that first. No? Any online? No? All right, we'll bring it back for matters presented from the audience. Public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escondue. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes, unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however it's not required due to state law. Action will be taken on an item that is not on the, will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At this time, anyone from the, the community that would like to speak? Anyone online?
Nope.
All right, we'll bring it back to public hearings. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We do, as you mentioned, have a public hearing tonight. This is an annual process that we adopt every year. It is a pass-through fee from the San Joaquin County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Fee, and this is run by SJCOG, so the San Joaquin Council of Governments. We do have a representative in the audience from SJCOG to answer any questions that you may have. So the Multi-Species Conservation and Open Space Plan is regional in nature, it covers the entire county and has established itself as an opportunity for development to pay into a fee to cover their either Endangered Species Act mitigation or any of their conservation needs. And effectively, what this does is it minimizes the amount of environmental effort that each project needs to go through to kind of streamline the process a little bit. So it looks like this year that the fees, the primary fee that we use is going up 8.3%. It went up about 7% last year and went down two years before that. So again, this is a pass-through fee that is charged to development, it is run by SJCOG, and we are responsible through development in, in indicating that this fee is, is required. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have, as well as who's here from SJCOG.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it. Any questions up at the dais for?
Just a brief question, the, so is this a flat fee that is assessed to all projects, no matter what the size?
It's a per acre fee.
Okay.
And yes, it's, it's, if there's a one acre project or 100 acre project, it's the per acre fee.
So the cost is 17,868 per acre?
For the agricultural or natural type land, you'll see there's four different categories, open space, agricultural, natural, vernal pools, uplands, and then vernal pools wedded. And you can see the variation in the resolution, the variation cost from almost 9,000 per acre to vernal pools wedded, 183,000 per acre.
Any other questions up here? Would you like to make a statement?
No, I was just standing here in case Jalen needed some assistance, but he handled it all.
Okay. Any questions from the community? No? Online? All right then, you're looking for direction here, right?
Yeah, we approve a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution XX25, which adopts the 2026 San Joaquin County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Fee Schedule as adjusted pursuant to the updated financial analysis model for the San Joaquin County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. So we'll move on to administrative matters. Go for, excuse me, city manager.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of an item that we discussed at the last meeting, and it is in regards to the city's recreation fees. As you know, the city runs the four sports programs, four sports leagues from the city, and we charge participants, players, to participate in the league. And so in the last meeting, there was conversation, of course, about the fees that haven't been updated since 2018, and we had some comparisons to other programs, other programs in the region. Council did provide direction, and in essence, the direction was to look at maintaining the existing fees by charging sort of an out-of-district fee that would make up the difference between what the city charges and what it costs the city to run that program. As we thought through that direction, we thought it wise, hopefully, to provide two other options as well for the council's consideration. And so that option is provided, and so just to use the baseball, baseball's the most expensive, meaning that's how much it costs, it's the most costly for the city to run in a per-player basis. Our fees are somewhere between 55 and $80. The cost per player is about $205, so you'd look at a fee of 55 to $80 for those who live within the 95320 or are within the school district, and anyone outside would make up the delta of that to the 205. So that is one option that is provided. The other option that is provided is to bump both fees up, both the in-district and the out-of-district fee. About the $100 range was chosen, as discussed at the council, because that's approximately what our costs are without indirect costs, so without overhead. This also sees an increase from about $10 for the out-of-district rate to about $50 for the out-of-district rate. So you see it increases both sides, the in-district and the out-of-district. And then we provided another option that increases closer to what it actually costs the city, but eliminates the out-of-district fee, which is more consistent with some of the other programs around. The city does not have a recommendation on one of the options or anywhere in between, but we did want to provide these three sort of disparate options for the council's full consideration. There are pros and cons of each, of course, there are pros and cons of any decision that the council may make on, on this matter. As we look at option C, you know, someone could say, well, why would we do that? There is some benefit to having a robust program, a large program, of course. We bring kids from the outside, we are mixing with, with other communities, other kids, can increase competition, can, you know, get to know other players, and it, it's a sign that our program is healthy when people from outside want to use our program. And option A, we don't know, but it could start to eliminate, which was pointedly said as the council, which would help our field space, right, reduce the burden on our field space, but it could eliminate some of those outside players. B is right in the middle, right? It's, it says, hey, you're, you're outside, you don't participate really financially in the city, you don't pay property tax, you're probably not paying as much sales tax, and therefore there is a cost to the program, but also increases at the same time the in-district rate to get a little closer to maybe what should be charged or what should be charged to not see a big subsidy from the city, so that there's not a, a large shock down the road, right? It gets a little closer. So again, three different options for the council's consideration. We definitely heard council direction, but also wanted to provide things for the council to kind of weigh against and, and compare to. So with that, Selinda or I, happy to answer any questions that you may have as you deliberate on this item.
Okay, I think I pass this off to Councilman Engle first, since you, I think it was you and.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Protem that kind of had that last couple of things to add last week.
So, I, I was trying to track here, and I think I was just initially on, on the wrong page, so I'm currently on page 193. Is, is that a fair and accurate summary of what you just said on, on 193?
I would say the most fair and accurate is page 189.
189, okay.
193 is largely the same, but provides some of the subsidy offsets that would be materialized if we enacted one of them. So that is a good place to go as well.
Okay. Yeah, can we start at 189 then? I, I was just having some difficulty understanding how to, how to read the chart.
Okay, no problem.
So I see, you know, in green, 24, 25 player cost, that's our actual, and then in that first column, option, option A there, so that is, I'm seeing 55, 65, 80, all the way down to 125. That's the proposed fee for out-of-area participants?
Yeah, so the first several rows is our costs, our fee carried over, and then the last one, the 125, is a representation of the out-of-district fee, and that is because 125 plus 80 equals the 205, which is the true cost of the city.
That makes sense to me now, thank you, I appreciate you clearing that up. And then just over there for the, the fee shortage, I mean, that seems pretty self-explanatory. Anything else that we should note? It was just some comparison there?
Yeah, all the way to the right, as you mentioned, that is the level of subsidy based on each option, should it move forward, per player.
Well, I mean, just, just from my perspective and, and when I brought it to council, you know, I'm leaning towards option A. I know we've heard some pushback previously when there was some increase in rates, it may be, it may have been challenging, so while I do believe that we, we need to increase those rates for our residents to, to make up some of that delta, I, I do think that we should give them a little bit of notice, you know? Something like this year, hey, guys, next year, guess what, 26, 27 season, we do plan on having some incremental, or some small fee increases. And that's just kind of where I sit for right now. I'm not really in favor of, of C at this point, just because I, I think that's just a big hit and we don't want to derail the program. I think that all of the, the different programs in, in the rec department are, are doing well, and, and we don't want to injure that at all, so I think your clarification of page 189 and 193 got me to where I needed to be. Mr. Mayor, I don't think I have anything else.
If you want to have anything else to add, Protem, from last meeting?
Um, I think I, I like the idea of getting to a place where we're at the level of the B chart there. I don't think we should do it in one year, just jump, and I, I like the idea of giving notice. How are numbers, how, how were numbers changed? Let's just say soccer had that biggest jump between the 22, 23 seasons and going from 50 to 76. Was there a big drop in numbers from those years, or we have, we continue to see increases in our, in our registrations?
In the last three years, we've seen increases. I don't have the data going back further than that, but in the last three years, we've seen increases, I want to say in every sport in each year.
I see basketball also went from 40 to 65 between 23 and 24, so we're not seeing a big drop-off, is what you're saying, or, I mean, it's primarily an increase, if not the same.
Yeah. Are you talking fees or participation? I'm sorry.
Participation, and I'm taking into account the increase of fees, so I'm seeing that the fees went up, both in basketball and then in soccer as well, so I'm trying to see if our increasing of fees is affecting how many registrants participate.
Decreasing the number of.
Correct, yeah. Because I don't want to discourage our residents from participating, however, compared, they're not going to another town for a lower fee. We are the lowest of fees, and I don't, I'm not against the subsidy, but somewhere in the middle would, yeah.
So you're, you're advocating for?
I like the $100, like if we can get to the $100 within a few years, that, that B schedule.
So you're saying the A schedule that.
That's where we're at right now, right?
Yeah, turns into the B schedule.
Yeah, and, and we had been talking, you know, just my knowledge of recreation in the past, we have been talking about increasing fees, you know, a couple bucks at a time, which is where you're seeing the, this 18, you know, everything jumps five bucks, and I think that was.
Just so I'm on the same page to understand. So you're saying, basically, starting with where Council Engle, uh, Engle, Council Engle is, and over the next few years, kind of slowly ramping up that increase.
Yeah.
To where it should be? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. I also am not, you know, I will say at the A schedule, however, that out-of-district fee of 125 is a little steep, and so I would just start at the 50 and just keep it 50. Keep the out-of-district fee at the 50, and then as we incrementally raise other prices, it's just 50 more than whatever we're charging our residents.
Any thoughts on this, Councilman Strowman or Kay?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm still playing catch-up, I watched the last meeting. Michelle, can you go back to slide 189, please? So, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, but, so for example, basketball, we're saying that the fee is either 40 or 65, and then in addition to that, there's an out-of-district fee for $34 on top of that 40 or 65? Is that correct?
No, I don't believe so. Oh, in, in option A.
In option A, yes.
And the proposed option A.
And then option B, it would be 50 or 70 plus a $50 out-of-district fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And these numbers are variable, of course. These are options that we put on paper, yes.
Right. I guess, question for the mayor, I know there was some discussion on what is considered district. Are we talking within Escondue Unified School District? Are we talking, what are the boundaries that?
I believe we discussed that, right? Was this?
Zip code of 95320.
Yeah, 95320.
And within the school district, if, if a student was in the school district.
District, yeah.
Okay, and so that's taking into account students that go to charter school and other private schools?
Correct.
So they would basically be paying, they wouldn't be responsible for the out-of-district fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, based on, based on the direction from the prior meeting.
What is, what is the boundary for 95320? Any idea?
Yeah.
Is Farmington 95320?
Oh, we also said if they were in Escondue Unified, so if they're in Farmington, they're in Escondue Unified as well.
And Collegeville would be able to pick that up as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Kay, anything you would like to add?
Kind of feel like the odd man out here, but I'm, I'm looking at these fee schedules, and what I'm seeing here is that, you know, this isn't a subsidy, we're, we're paying more than half, you know, for, for these players to play. I, I don't think that that's fiscally responsible of us to call it a subsidy when, you know, you look at $205 and we're charging somebody $55 to play, that's a huge discrepancy there. I, I really think that we need to move those numbers much more towards at least a 50% mark where, where these players are covering half of their cost and that we're only subsidizing half of it. While I do agree, you know, I don't want to price anybody out of this, I have three kids that went through, you know, these programs and, you know, we were able to do it because, you know, our fee schedule has been so great to us, but our costs have continued to go up year after year and our fees have stayed the same. I really think there needs to be some kind of moving on it, slow rolling it, I, I can definitely, you know, agree with, but something has to change there. I don't think that it's okay for us to just say, oh, let's just keep going as we are when you look at, you know, we're subsidizing plus 50%. That, that's not a subsidy.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one other thing to my comments?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I can appreciate the fee schedule for basketball, flag football, and soccer. I, I believe that it might be a little bit premature to talk about the fees for baseball, softball, because of the ongoing discussions related to possibly migrating to Little League, which would mean anything that we would decide tonight for baseball, softball, would then turn around and trigger another vote if the decision is made to go to Little League baseball. So I, I, I would recommend if we're talking about increasing fees primarily tonight, we look at basketball, flag football, and soccer until a determination is made if we're going to Little League, because the last thing we would want to do is decide on the baseball, softball fees, explain to the community, these are the fees, and then a decision is made to migrate to Little League, and then they get another notice, there's a difference at its fees. And so I think we need to hold off on baseball, softball, at least for four to six weeks or whenever the. or whenever the decision is made with Little League.
How far out do you think we are, you think, from that kind of a decision?
Normally, baseball would open up November 1st for registration. We have a little bit of flexibility in there, of course. That is one of our longest, I don't know, registration timeframes. The community is looking to hold a community workshop to discuss this issue. That is tentatively been scheduled for late October, still looking for a location. And so it could go as quickly or as slowly sort of as they want it to, right? The community, this is really a community-driven conversation, not a city-driven conversation. And so I would say in the next, you know, four weeks, we should, four to six weeks, we should see something.
How does that, how do you see that as far as complicating the potential of bringing back and us vote on it to then put it out to the community?
Yeah, is there a large cost discrepancy?
They are trying to figure out if they go to Little League, what that cost will be. The rec commissioner wanted to keep it around $100. I don't know if that's feasible or not. They won't know if that's feasible or not until a number of things get determined. And so let me answer that with another conversation here. Costs go up because over the years, we have added more things to the program. Nicer jerseys, you know, All-Star Games with New Jerseys, equipment, right? There's another side to this where we could reduce costs. I don't want to throw a monkey wrench. I just want, you know, everyone to be clear that you can raise fees or you can lower costs to get to the same.
I guess what I'm getting at is trying to get some clarity on what Councilman Strowman is saying.
I was trying to weave a couple of different things into the conversation. We can, council can always provide direction. And if you want to this night, you know, talk about three programs, we can absolutely do that and put a pin in another one.
That's not going to create a concern. In other words, I just want to make sure that, say we did hypothetically table that part till we have an answer, is that going to create a problem? Like, are we going to have to have a special meeting? Or like, is it going to create a problem with it getting back to us so that we can then get the fees out to the people?
I don't believe so. There's so much, no, I don't believe so. There's so much variability in what is going to happen anyway. If you approve a baseball fee, we can communicate that out. If they then have to change it through Little League, they were going to change it anyway. Whatever our fee is.
It makes sense to me to pause it until we know for sure. That way, we're not creating confusion. I don't know how the rest of the diocese sees it, but that's kind of how I see it. Any other input?
Yeah. First, just for clarification on that too, the green there. And Councilor Strowman wasn't here. I actually have a, I felt there's a discrepancy with those indirect costs. So that includes the indirect costs that are costs that are spread over each department. And so to me, that's a little high anyway. I do like the fee schedule of B, which is almost without those indirect costs. And that would be the subsidy, is taking indirects costs would be the subsidy. And that's just to get up to date. With the Little League, the Little League is a community-driven endeavor. It's not through the city. So it would be a private group, starting a Little League, coming to the city, say, we have started a Little League and we will be taking registration, if I'm correct.
For those 10 U and up?
Correct.
And leaving the T-ball and rookies.
Yeah, so in my opinion, we should move forward as though, nobody has come to us to say, hey, we have another program and we're going to be running this in the city of Escalon. We need to move forward as though we are running our regularly scheduled baseball and softball program. Until such time, another entity comes up to us and says, we're ready to start a Little League or another type of program. Right now, that's out of our hands, that's in the community, that's this group that wants to do a Little League. And I commend them for trying and to start this up and give us another option. But I don't think that our hands should be tied right now and we should just go forward as though we are running our baseball and softball program. Because it's time, it's time for registration. I don't want us to stop registration till mid-December and them, that's six weeks out, or eight weeks out, and them say, oh, we can't come through. And then we're late for registration, we're late for all of the things, the uniform ordering and all of the things that go into what our staff has to do for our baseball and softball program. And we need to continue building the relationship with the other leagues that we're participating with right now and not put that on hold in any confusion like we did last year and we weren't able to participate with some of those outside communities.
I get your concern. I guess if there's a way that we can, you know, provide clarity on, you know, the situation to the public would probably be the best, you know, scenario, or best approach, I should say.
Mr. Mayor, I understand what Mayor Pro Tem is saying. I totally get that. I guess, I guess I was envisioning that we were, if the city manager knows when we absolutely have to open up registration for minors, majors and anything outside of T-ball and rookies. So let's say they have a public meeting at the end of October. They say, yes, we're moving forward. Then that would allow us to make a determination what we're going to do with the T-ball and rookies. And then as far as minor, major and seniors, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is telling the public, yeah, these are going to be the rates. And then people are thinking these are the rates. Then the community group is coming back a second time now and saying, well, no, now these are the rates for Little League. And then people are going to think, well, what the heck? This city just said these were going to be the rates. And by having two different rates out there, whether that's for baseball, softball or Little League, I'm just trying to avoid confusion as far as what the perception is going to be from the community. But I understand your concern.
Mr. Mayor, I personally think that we're already too late. We're running the same scenario that we did last year and we're, I agree with Pro Tem. This is what we saw. We ran into this late, late in the year, too close to registration and then the program kind of fell apart. I personally wouldn't and won't support a move to Little League this year for a planning for like the 26, 27 season. Like, yeah, let's have the workshop, let's work it out, let's have a smooth transition, rather than try and force it and potentially lose participation in the program. And then kind of after hearing everything that's going on, I do, everybody else's comments, I do agree that the fees need to go up. So it's really altered my thoughts on the options A, B and C. I'm definitely leaning more towards like an option A with a $5, you know, per year increase until we get to a minimum of that, you know, 50% cost that we heard Councilman Kay talk about down there at the end and at which time we could come back and visit it again and see where we truly are. I definitely want to support the youth. I'm not a fan of government supplementation. But for our kids, I would be willing to alter my way of thinking and try and still support them to get them out and actively playing and off their devices and no more Roblox and all the other stuff that they're doing right now.
So are you proposing kind of a phase, phase from A to B?
Yeah, I think when we get there, that's the correction of my motion, for sure.
Okay, and you do make, you do bring a good point up as far as making sure it's a smooth transition. So it probably would be best to go at it with the mindset that we are moving forward with this year, with the exception of some, you know, outside-the-box scenario from the Little League, tentatively planning for that to start in that 26, 27 so that they have, if they do this, in theory, there's a board set up, there's a collaboration with the city already ready to go.
Yeah, I think we can really, we can really look at it because we're still going to end up managing portion of it. So those indirect costs are still going to be there for the?
Yeah, for field, field use and all that good stuff. Makes sense.
The T-ball and rookies.
Yeah, more you say that, I think, I chew it over. I think probably what you're proposing is the best course forward.
So Councilmember Engle, you're thinking, like, for example, basketball, this year would be 40, next year would be 45, the year after would be 50?
No, I'm thinking for the 25, 26 season, that would go up that first $5. And then incrementally, year over year, $5 until we achieved that 50%, that loss that we're seeing right here, that that's reduced to, that we're only supplementing 50% of locals' fees. I don't think we should be supplementing anybody outside of the area's fees. And then at that point, we bring it back and take a look at how well the programs have been performing, where we stand financially and looking to see if we need to make any future adjustments.
So you're saying basketball, like, for example, basketball for tots this year, next coming year, it'd be 45?
Yep.
And then the following year, so where is that cap? Is that at the $70 mark? Is that what you're saying? So 45, 50, 55, till we get to that $70 threshold?
No, till we get to a minimum of 50% of our actual costs. So if, for example, we raised it to 45, that gets us to, you know, not quite half of the 24, 25 cost per player at $99. The following year, when it went up to 50, if the cost was still $99, we could take a look at that and consider it again. We would be covering half. But I have to assume that all of these costs are going to increase year over year. Umpires, referees, cost of maintenance on the field, equipment, all of those things are going to go up every year. So we would kind of chase that until we were satisfied. I think 50%, would be a good place to stop and then take another look. So it wasn't a $5 increase per year in perpetuity. It was until we reached a certain threshold in the program and then we just reevaluated.
And you're proposing this for the district, inter-district or in the district, not for those out, right? You're saying, in other words?
Correct. Yeah, the out-of-district folks would still be paying their, you know, out-of-area fee on top of whatever the normal fee would be.
Any input on that, Councilman Kay?
I think Councilman Engle has the right idea there and I'm on board 100%. I think that's perfect.
Pro Tem?
I, it's not exactly what Councilor Engle is proposing. I mean, it would be similar numbers, how the calculations would end up working out. I think that we take out indirect costs from the chart from the last meeting. I don't know if you have that easily available or not to pull up. But if you take out indirect costs, they do come to about what the B schedule is. So the numbers end up coming in very similar to what his 50% ends up being. It's just what we're doing. I'm not doing a 50 percentage. I'm taking what they have as those fees, taking out indirect costs, and they do come out to about $100.
So Pro Tem, can I ask that question? Why would we remove indirect fees because it's still an incurred cost to us?
The way that they're calculating it, I feel like that is, it's evenly throughout each department. I don't feel like, is that not how it is?
It's percentage based on expenses. So if you spend $100,000, like rec gets about 8% because they have a smaller amount of expenses than, say, the water department would. So between enterprise and everything, they're getting their percentage of costs. So their percentage of the electricity that's used for the fields. We can't really say it's soccer or it's baseball. That's getting put in there and getting split. So there's some things that are very rec-related that are getting cut apart based on their expenses. But then there's also things overhead, like the insurance that we have to pay that's $170,000 a year. The total insurance for work that's comp and everything is upwards of $400,000. So every department gets a little, little piece of it, a little bite of it. So there's a lot of these expenses that cannot be removed from these areas, but you can definitely remove them from your calculation of the fee. The other thing, if I can add real quick, is the out-of-district fee. If we implement that in practice, in theory, it's great, but in practice, we'd have to remove the online registration because you'd be requiring people to increase their own fees, to say, yes, I'm an out-of-district person, so I'm going to add my own fee. They're just simply not going to do that. So we'd end up having to take fees in person.
Can you, can you add an additional query there that's like their address?
Why would you put your address in to pay $125 more?
No, I mean, they would have to put an address in.
Make it mandatory for?
You know what I'm saying?
An address for all.
You might be able to do something where people have to like upload a document or something. I'm not quite sure how sophisticated the online process is, but I believe this is why other cities don't have this fee.
Why don't you just ask for proof of residency, like a utility bill or something?
The hours required to do that for every single child that participates would be enormous. So it gets to be in practicality, how much do you want to spend in order to get this out-of-district fee when it's only about 25%? And the additional slides will show you that it doesn't really recoup very much cost at all.
I think as part of the hopes would be that it would reduce the out-of, out-of-area participants, which reduces stress on our field, reduces stress on our staff, reduces stress on the outreach for coaching because we see that every season, right? Last-minute ditch effort, we need coaches or your kids aren't going to be able to play. So there's got to be somewhat of a wash. But if we just go back to the indirect fees, do you feel that the indirect fees are an accurate representation of the portion of budget that is actually utilized for the recreation programs?
It is a little low compared to what it should be.
Okay.
But we attempt to try not to burden that one activity with more costs than are reasonable. So we have to kind of look at this and go, okay, well, we have all these costs that we can directly attach and then we have all these really blanketed overhead costs, like the insurance, like the things that we have to allocate out. I can't say, oh, well, you know, the police department should take the lion's share of the Rickets Comp insurance, that type of thing, even though they are more than 50% of the total general fund expenses. But we can see where rec, the deficit last year was $200,000. Over six years, it was $600 and some odd thousand. So it's not a small amount. But even if I was to reduce those overhead costs by 50%, you're still looking at losing $100,000 a year. So it's not really something that you can say, well, we just won't charge them that. They're, they are being charged a sufficient amount, but not the entirety of what their particular piece of the pie would be.
So Celinda, last year, what percentage do you think registrations were done online versus in person?
Without having done them myself and only seeing the bits of information that I have, I believe it's 100%.
Online?
Online. That is the most effective way to use the staff time because we only have half a staff member being allocated out to rec at this time. So you think the refs and all that kind of, that's not our staff member. And our staff member has insurance and, you know, all the CalPERS expenses, everything. We've got some good costs for that employee.
And that was through Blue Sombrero?
A couple different websites and I think it's sports-related and some of the websites are more sophisticated than others. So knowing what each site and each sport's going to be able to do, we'd have to investigate that.
If we were to take away the online option, it's going to create some issues with the?
Would reduce the players by quite a bit, which would reduce the city's cost by quite a bit. I'm all for less players.
It would increase staff time, though. It would increase the amount of traffic at the desk coming in and how much staff?
Bounce checks.
Yeah, the time that it would take.
I think we just increase the fee for the out-of-district and just see how that, use it as a pilot year and just see how it goes.
I like that. I like the idea of increasing the out-of-district. I don't know about the, I like the 50 over the entirety.
Yeah, I would agree on that. I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I think kind of slowly phasing it up, you know, everything nowadays is a little more expensive. So I don't think jumping it up would be the right idea, I think phasing it up is.
Do you have the, I mean, you do, on the, this agenda packet, the chart that has all of the cities and what? Oh, sorry.
We're clearly real low compared to everyone else's.
Yeah. On the, the one you were, the last agenda packet?
Oh, the last one.
The one you were on, just scroll to, it's a couple pages off of.
And just to add, while Michelle is pulling that, there would certainly be logistical issues associated with verifying both school district participation and/or ZIP code residency. I think we could, you know, I'm not maybe as pessimistic as Celinda, although, you know, she's probably correct. I think we could probably figure it out. I don't want to miss, you know, mislead or misconstrue an issue. I think we could probably figure it out, but it needs to be said, it'll be a logistical, I don't want to say nightmare, but it'll be a logistical challenge. but it'll be a logistical challenge to verify these multiple things. And it will lead to some level of misuse, I guess, for sure. It will increase staff time. So I think we could probably end up figuring it out with some sort of if you're this and then that through the program, but it will no doubt create challenges.
Or, I mean, I don't mean to get in the minutia, but could you just have a little thing where somebody, it's just a little disclaimer that says by checking this box, you verify that you are within the Escalon Unified School District or primary residences within 95320, and they check the box, and then you find out mid-season that they live in Ripon, and then you can say, well, you lied on your form, so you're now you're responsible to pay the out-of-use fee.
I don't see how anyone's ever going to do that work. I, I think, you know, the best route would be to, you know, talk to our IT guys, see if there's something that, you know, a, a simple address verification, I, I would think would be very simple for someone with that kind of knowledge to be able to work into our registration system.
The problem is that, that right now, we're using third-party
Right.
... registration. So I think it would be who of us to find out from those third-party registrations, is, do they have the ability to do address verification?
Any other thoughts up here before we go out to the community and bring it back? Okay, go out to the community. Any thoughts? Online? Okay, we'll bring it back to DIAS to kind of do the final chewing over it.
And just one more. We pulled the last two years of out-of-district participation, and it looks like total is, was 21.4% in 2024 and 20.25% in 2025. So about 20, 21, 20% out-of-district. That includes those not in the school district and not in 95320.
Seems to me like the best way to do it would be to phase it from A to B. At the same time, go ahead and chase what Councilman K said as far as, you know, seeing if there is a, a realistic or easy way that we can, you know, use the computer to do the, the thinking for us, so to speak. I'm sure there's some AI program that does that or something. And, you know, at the same time, you know, bump those fees up and just see how it goes for a pilot year. Worst thing that happens is you can always change it, you know?
Is that a motion?
Sure, if you guys don't have anything else to say.
What was the motion?
It was a kind of a combination of things. Let me see if I can put it in simple terms.
So we increase $50 for the out-of-district?
Yeah, we'd start from basically A and phase it at $5 increments up to B, is kind of like Councilman Engel was suggesting. Pursuing the, you know, total cost for the out-of-district, but then seeing if there's some way that we can, you know, harness the computer side of things so that we don't have to allocate more, more time to the staff.
So does that mean for this upcoming season for baseball and softball, the increased fee will be 125 for out-of-district if we're sticking to A? Is that what we're saying?
That's, that's how I would see it, yeah.
We're, we're going to go ahead and, those are going to be the out-of-district fees?
I, I would think so.
Yeah, we're going to charge them their full cost. Yeah.
So, so for out-of-district, your motion is they will get A, out-of-district fee under A, and in-district, so to speak, will be the A as well for this, for this year?
This year.
With a $5 increase?
A $5 increase.
In future years?
No.
Starting this year? Starting this year with a $5, so, so A plus $5 in district and the out-of-district in A.
You got it.
Got it.
And then the last little caveat is figuring out if there is a, a tool that can be used to, you know, keep the honest people honest. I mean, there are people who are always going to bend the rules a little bit, but as a general rule, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I will second your makeshift motion.
Can I ask a question before we go to vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just for clarification. So for flag football, in-district would be $70, and then it would be $70 plus 109 for out-of-district.
They'd be paying the full 174.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And then
So you're saying $70 would be, we're taking it from 65 to 70, so it's going up for the people in our district by $5 to 70.
Okay.
And then the people out of district would go up the 109.
And so that same example would be $40 for, talking about basketball, either 40 or 65 plus the 34, or, I'm sorry, 45 or 70 plus the 34.
They'll pay ni, they'll pay 99, period. That's their cost. That's what they'll bet.
So the out-of-district in this motion would decrease, I think, $5 based on
The actual cost.
The motion. It would get to the actual cost in the green column. So if you increase the rate $5, your out-of-district rate would decrease $5, so you're not exceeding the per-player cost of the city.
Yeah, so if I may propose a perfection to the motion, if the council's okay with it, the motion that was first and seconded by the mayor and Councilmember K, except that the out-of-district shall not, shall be reduced to the extent it does not exceed the overall cost for that
That makes sense to me, yeah.
So if there's adjustment on the back end, like he said, $5 or $4 or $10 or whatever, just so we can't have the fee exceed the cost either.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Councilman?
And I got a question before you, we move on. We've started registration for basketball. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this would start with base, baseball, softball, right? Because that would be the next sport that we open up registration. So we continue with what we have going on with basketball, correct?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And then, as, we wouldn't go back and people that have already paid, pay
No.
Something else, right?
I don't think you'd ret, go retroactive.
Can I?
So we would start with the 26, 27s?
For basketball, yeah.
For basketball.
Everything.
And Celinda, are these fees adopted as
Six.
The budget every year?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, these fees are part of the ma, the major fee schedule.
So we should probably, so we should probably, where the plan is to amend that fee schedule and bring it back to council?
Yes, that is the plan. This would give us direction for that one page of the very long fee schedule and
Perfect. I just wanted to make clear that this is not approving the fees tonight. This is giving direction, and then you will approve them as part of the fee schedule, hopefully soon.
Next meeting is my expectation.
Can I make a recommendation to the mayor before we vote on his motion? Wouldn't it be simpler to just say that we're increasing the fees in Schedule A for in-district $5, and then the direct cost would be what's in green? Because the numbers are the same.
However you want to think of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But the motion that
I think we stand, yeah.
Okay.
So there's, we've had a second. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. So we'll go on to council communications at this time.
The dollars are the same, it just
I, I know what you're saying. It's semantics.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I guess we'll start with Councilman K.
Really don't have much to say. Way to work through something quickly and appreciate all the conversation and consensus. Everyone have a wonderful night.
We'll go to Councilman Strowman.
Yeah, briefly, I apologize. I missed the last meeting. I was back in Springfield, Massachusetts for a work event. But did watch it on YouTube. Last Thursday, myself and mayor and city manager and chief went to State of the County address at UOP. It was very, the history part of it was very educational. I never realized there was that much history here in the South County, but just, I really enjoyed that discussion. And really, that's about all I have.
Okay. Councilman Engel?
Yeah, I, I got some communication earlier in the week about bringing it to council for consideration of reduced fees for the community center for a reunion for the class of, Escalon class of 71. So if I can get consensus on that and bring it to the next meeting, that would be great.
I'll support that.
I'll, I'll support that.
Okay. No, other than that, another efficient meeting. We're on a roll. Hopefully I didn't jinx it, so I look forward to the next one and more of the same.
All right. Pro Tim?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'll keep it simple as well. Other than learning about Jedediah Smith being in our area, that's, I don't have much else to add to it. So we go to close session right now, and have a good rest of your evening. So we go to close session right now and have a good rest of your evening.